We're live. Awesome. Welcome to the Select Board meeting. What's the date today?
September 7th.
On September 7th, 2021. September 7th. On September 7th, 2021. I'm Anita Mecklenburg. I'm Anita Mecklenburg. I'm Vice Chair, stepping in for Chair. I'm Vice Chair, stepping in for Chair. C.C. Van Tyn is not here this evening, and I have Kevin Calcutt with me. C.C. Van Tyn is not here this evening, and I have Kevin Calcutt with me. In accordance with the provisions of MGL Chapter 30A, Section 20, In accordance with the provisions of MGL Chapter 30A, Section 20, notice is hereby notice is hereby given that the Select Board will meet on Tuesday, September 7th. given that the Select Board will meet on Tuesday, September 7th. Oh, I already read, I already told you that. Oh, I already read, I already told you that. Additional public access because of the Governor's orders will be given via Zoom, Additional public access because of the Governor's orders will be given via Zoom, online video online video conferencing. conferencing. This application will allow users to view the meeting and provide comments during This application will allow users to view the meeting and provide comments during allocated allocated windows as outlined in the Board's public comment policy. windows as outlined in the Board's public comment policy. To join, you can follow the web link, dial a number, or it's also broadcast on cable To join, you can follow the web link, dial a number, or it's also broadcast on cable for folks. for folks. So, thank you and welcome. So, thank you and welcome.
Pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
Please stand and face the flag. Please stand and face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. all.
My suggestion is to go to the background memo for the executive session and read My suggestion is to go to the background memo for the executive session and read the motions to enter into executive session. the motions to enter into executive session. So, the first one is about the middle of the page. So, the first one is about the middle of the page.
So, I move that the Board enter into, okay. So, I move that the Board enter into, okay.
You can have Kevin read it and you can second it. You can have Kevin read it and you can second it.
Kevin's all queued up and ready to go. Kevin's all queued up and ready to go.
Awesome. Awesome.
I move that the Board enter into executive session under MGL Chapter 30A, Subsection I move that the Board enter into executive session under MGL Chapter 30A, Subsection 21a3, to discuss litigation entitled Thomas E. and Leslie J. Hoffmeister versus Town 21a3, to discuss litigation entitled Thomas E. and Leslie J. Hoffmeister versus Town of Norfolk Zoning Board of Appeals, Land Court Docket Number 20 MISC 000180 HPS. of Norfolk Zoning Board of Appeals, Land Court Docket Number 20 MISC 000180 HPS. And so far, an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the And so far, an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the public body, and invite Attorney Rachel Millet, members of the ZBA, Rich McCarthy, Blythe public body, and invite Attorney Rachel Millet, members of the ZBA, Rich McCarthy, Blythe Robinson, and Joe Hans to participate. Robinson, and Joe Hans to participate. The Board will return to open session at the conclusion of the executive session. The Board will return to open session at the conclusion of the executive session.
So, I'm going to state that a public meeting would be done to have a detrimental So, I'm going to state that a public meeting would be done to have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body, and I'm going to poll the Board. effect on the negotiating position of the public body, and I'm going to poll the Board.
Kevin Calcutt, aye. Kevin Calcutt, aye.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye. Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
Great. Great. We're in executive session. We're in executive session.
I have a quick question, and it doesn't absolutely need an answer right now, but do we have any more definition around Desi's direction about masks in schools going through October 1st in that deadline? I know that they had put like an arbitrary 80% vaccination rate within the school, but I wasn't clear if that was...
I think that's only for the kids of over in middle and high school, correct?
Yes, 12 and over.
Right.
So there is nothing like that for the elementary schools at this point?
Not that I've heard.
And the local decision, the local school board can set that bar even if Desi doesn't, so they can continue on.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yep.
And we're on to number two, which is public comments. So if you are interested in making a comment, not a dialogue, but if you're interested in making a comment, that we have a limit of three minutes or less, I'm glad to see your hand up. Always nice to hear from you. You're welcome to join the meeting and keep your remarks to three minutes or under. Go ahead. I'm going to use my stopwatch.
Good evening, Mr. Alex. How are you?
For those of you that don't, haven't known me over the years, and I'm saying a lot of things, just so people out there know my credentials, when I retired, I was a senior inspector for Dataless Projects, which is one of the most prestigious project managing companies in probably all of New England. I made a phone call to the owner of the company the other day, curious to what it costs now to build fire stations. And this is one square foot. The price now to build new is $600. Renovations, 20%. So hopefully this will help you make up your mind which direction heading. And to change the subject a little bit, I know you know a lot about schools. You're looking to add on to a couple of the schools, I don't know if you can hear me, add on to a couple of bulls. Well, we may be looking at building some new, but where? The only large parcel of land around is at Pondville. So be careful what you're negotiating to not give away, what to manage away. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Are there any other hands up? Are there hands up in our Zoom hands?
No.
Going once, going twice? That closes our public comment period. Item number three, Blythe.
I was just doing some math about the fire station.
Oh.
So number three is to consider a board of beer and wine licenses for two events that Zealous Beer Company would like to have on October 3rd and October 24th. In your packet is their complete application for those dates. I think at this point, their work with having these events is fairly well-known, has gone quite well. So they're looking for to use Town Hill on those two dates, and for the first date of October 3rd, they also would like to have an entertainment license, and I can see that Mr. Petter's here in the audience in case you have any questions.
Awesome. Is there anything else you want to add to what Blythe had?
Uh, no. I'm short on words today, sorry.
Thank you, Kevin. Any questions?
Nope. Jeff, looking forward to have you back. Thank you.
Me too. Entertainment motion?
I move that the board vote to approve the use of Town Hill for Zealous Beer Company for pop-up beer and food events on October 3rd and 24th, and issue a one-day beer and wine licenses for those dates, as well as an entertainment license for October 3rd.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I was waiting for you to say Kevin called, but aye, but we don't need a roll call vote. Alrighty, aye. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming back to us. Looking forward to it.
Have a nice day.
You too. Number four, Blythe, please discuss an overview of the Old Town Hall property.
Yes, so at some point this spring, we received a request to bring this topic back up again and bring everyone up to speed about it. So with help from the two gentlemen in the audience who know more about it than I do, and who I'm grateful have joined us tonight, is Bob Bullock, our building commissioner, and Rich McCarthy, our town planner, who helped me put together this overview that's in your packet. So I'm gonna, I want to lead it off, and then I think they'll be able to dialogue with you about, you know, what it really means. But what we tried to cover was the facts about, there's actually two lots that make up 98 and 100 Main Street. So we go over, you know, what they're for, what the restrictions are on both of, or one of those properties. We go, we have a section that talks about the two buildings that are there, which is one, the Old Town Hall, which I think piques most people's interest, but not to be forgotten is the, is the structure behind it, a garage building that's been used for various types of storage over the years. We've gone over the prior planning efforts, what was done to bring this to a town meeting vote in 2017 that was unsuccessful to sell a part of it. Some of the things that we need to consider, and then Bob especially can help us with the development plan that was, was brought to that town meeting and what the intent was behind that. So we can just familiarize everybody again with what the facts are, not to make any decisions, but just to do that and then see if, you know, maybe at some point the board wants to discuss a direction. Do we want to leave it as it is for a while? Do we want to tear the building down and keep everything? Do we want to sell a part of it? Because there's some other, there's some other factors at play here, which both of them could tell you more about.
Thank you very much. Any questions before we start?
No.
Gentlemen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Do you want me to kind of just give you a rundown of where, how this all came about?
We'd love that.
Okay. So 2013, well, actually going back prior to that, and I think it was 98 that the town hall was closed and they built a new, this new building. So one of the reasons it was condemned was because the septic system had failed or was in tough shape, and then it also didn't have handicap accessibility to the second floor. There was another issue. So the town used it for various things with recreation, and it really kind of, kind of ran out of its life, you know, with the septic problem. So in 2013, I had, we perked the property on the right-hand side, which is probably the only place that it could perk unless it was way out in the back. So it parked, you know, close to the street. We, so I had Rick Adro, the engineers, draw up a plan, putting the parking lot on the right-hand side of the building, knowing that the handicap accessibility from the parking going into the front door would be handicap accessible. In the back, there's an area that could use for more parking. If you have this picture, actually. This picture. That kind of gives you the idea. We didn't draw in the parking in the lower part of the building, but I think they would probably use it. We just did this as a one-shot deal. One of the things that the engineer did was he went over 30 feet, but he actually needs to go over 50 feet because you can't have any parking or driveways coming in within 50 feet of a residential district. So if we, we may probably lose two space, probably four spaces altogether to slide it over. So you may need more parking, and I would, if we were going to sell it, just to give them an easement through the town's parking lot there, to be able to get to the back of their building area to maybe more parking. So, and this is just something that's been sitting there now for almost 23 years really with no use and just decaying. And it's, you know, we brought it to the town back in 2017, hoping that, you know, we could possibly sell it and someone could renovate it for possibly a dentist office, a law office, something to that degree, that they could use the second floor, but they could have a conference room on the first floor for the handicap accessibility part, as long as it's all one business. And somebody could remodel that building and probably make it look pretty nice to like it used to in the beginning, you know, many years ago, but, or they could tear it down and rebuild it. The problem with tearing, the town tearing it down is we may lose the ability to rebuild something there because there's a river act that may play a role in this. And I, I don't know all those rules, but I've heard people talk about it in the past, you know, past conservation boards. So where it's a perennial stream, I think that could be a potential problem that if we just took it down. And we don't want to leave it too long that it could, you know, deteriorate to that point anyways. So my thought was just if we sold it, we'd be getting some money for it. We'd also be ending it back on the tax rolls and make some use of the property, so.
I thought also to add, I think that's an excellent overview, to add to it, that particular option, we'd sell basically what's along the main street, and would still allow the town to keep the, most of the area that we sell for parking permits, you know, for future parking and the garage in the back. And as Rich can tell you, and I'm sure you know from talking about the sewer master plan, and a concept has had the forced main going from Main Street through the property to get over across the railroad tracks to Freeman Kennedy. And so you don't want to, you may not want to, we may not want to rid ourselves of all of it because we would lose some of those things. And so that's a conversation for another day. What's, what's most important here? Rich, some things to, thoughts to add to all this because you helped with this overview as well?
Sure. I think having, actually the first town meeting was the November 2017 town meeting that I attended, starting a couple of weeks before. I think, you know, reflecting back on that town meeting, I think it seemed to be kind of a new, new person just starting in town, that there was a lot of questions of, in terms of what it could be used for. I think, you know, having discussions with Bob after that and Blythe, I think the idea would be to just put a little more information out there ahead of time if you decide to move forward, that what would be allowed there was what's allowed within the B1 zoning. So whatever it's, you know, by right or by special permit, so it would conform to the existing business district zoning. Both parcels are within the business district zoning. This area is outside the inner core, so that would reflect in terms of larger setbacks from the street, so forth. I think, I don't know how far Town Hall, so 25 feet in the outer now, so I think it's closer than 25 feet to the street. So actually, so Bob's point about preserving the building might be advantageous for somebody in terms of setbacks. But I think, you know, and so some of the, in terms of the Wetlands Protection Act and redevelopment, so there are some nuances. But I think, you know, I think, I think there probably could be a little more pre-work, I think, on the boards, you know, to get this out there. If you like to consider moving forward for people to be more, you know, up to speed in terms of what could go there, not go there. That seemed to be a big thing that night, at least that was a takeaway I got, like what is it going to be used for? And there wasn't any specific, I don't recall if anybody said, but essentially what's allowed in the B1 zoning district, that's, that's what would be there. So it's, it's nothing more than that, but.
And I think some things to think about, and we outlined them here, was, you know, do we want to keep all of it or part of it for the things we talked about? If we want to keep all of it, we just don't want the eyesore of the building anymore. It's a choice to take it down. We'd have to get some, we'd have to figure out what we think that would cost, you know, 20,000, 50,000, I'm not sure. And then we'd have to allocate the money to do that. And if you do that and we take it down, as Bob says, you may lose the chance to do something different in the future. We value having the building for storage, you know, it's been valuable in non-pandemic times to sell parking. But, you know, is there any other type of use that we would have as a town there? You know, given that you're dealing with this one building and this, this particular footprint? And we have a library, we have, I think, all the other buildings, and we can't necessarily put a new fire station there. So, and if we sell it, you know, will we, so my ask, well, can we get top dollar? Well, maybe not if they've got to put money into renovating that building. Someone might not give you a same price as they would if it was a clean piece of property they could put a building, they could site a building on. Just thinking that through. And town meeting, we have to approve it because you're selling, you know, it's an interest in land, so it's town meeting. We, we put it out for a bid, people would bid on it, the highest bidder would likely be the one we'd bring to town meeting saying, you know, this company wants to buy it, here's the price, does town meeting want to sell it? Yes or no?
And so what you're looking for from the board is that we dust it off and shine some light on it, so that people know that it's being considered and have an opportunity to bring feedback with their ideas or thoughts about that property?
Yes, yeah, I think it's kind of a, I'd say trying to close out the loop on this, to kind of have a final plan of some sort, and then we could put closure to it. And that's, because it has been hanging out there for four-plus years now. I know, I know it's come up in other conversations in terms of, you know, what are we going to do with it? So I've heard it more recently, not too long ago, probably two weeks ago, to be quite frank about it, in a different meeting, so. So it would be good to try to wrap things up. I think it would, it would show, you know, we are paying attention to these things, we are having an action plan, and we're going to move either to not do something or do something. So I would like to give you consideration.
Do you have any questions?
Oh, do I? So I remember that town meeting. I was on the planning board, and it was like, I think it was my first town meeting, actually, as part of a board, and I... And I remember being in the crowd and listening to the chatter of people who, you know, some people were not trusting what was going to be done with the property. Some people wanted to know specifically what was going to be done with the property. There's just too many unknowns out there that we just didn't feel comfortable moving forward with. So I think my first question is, back then in 2017, have a party that was specifically interested in the property that we were planning to work with, had we made it past that first step? Or was this just a general first step to open up the doors to have those conversations?
Well, there was an individual that had actually approached me about putting a funeral home in. Norfolk doesn't have a funeral home. They thought it would be a nice spot for it. You know, there is a parking lot that's right next door that maybe they could lease from the town. But other than that, no. I mean, it was really just knowing that the building on the property has been there for 19 years at that point, that, you know, it's time to do something with it. And, you know, and I think this just keeps on coming up and becomes, you know, the wall that just nobody wants to move on because, you know, we can't dictate what someone's going to do when they buy it. It's just, they're going to either buy it and remodel it or they're going to buy it and tear it down and build something new. But I think people have to understand is there is limited commercial space in the town. And, you know, this is a commercial spot that someone could actually turn around fairly quickly if they were going to remodel it or even if they took off the wing on the left-hand side and then did addition there that made it a little bit more accessible. There's plenty of different avenues to do something there. So just with the prices of today, with the real estate, it just seems to me like it may behoove the town that this would be an ideal time to do something with it.
I was just, I was thinking, wasn't really a question. I was just thinking we have such a need for childcare in this town, and it's a really nice location for childcare for our commuters and.
Yeah, I would agree.
But that was just a thought.
Yes, we would put out a bid and we would ask someone to tell us what their plans were to it. But, you know, so town meeting might be able to know it's going to be a funeral home or it's going to be a doctor's office. That's what the intent is of the buyer. But we can't promise them exactly what the boards, through permitting, will say yes or no to, as they have their right to do. We can't nail down every detail.
Thank you. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No worry. As it stands right now, do we have any liability or safety concerns with the state of the building as it is in right now, with people who might be finding themselves over there and potentially getting hurt?
We have insurance on it.
I haven't heard of anybody breaking into it at all. I think people, the work town, go over there somewhat to go, you know, some things that have been stored there, you know, not very much. I mean, there's very limited stuff that's in there at this point. I think sometimes, you know, the people have expressed, I think even at that meeting, that why don't we fix it up and, you know, remodel it instead of selling it? And yet, when we're dealing with prevailing wages as a government agency, it just makes it untenable, honestly, I think anyways.
Yeah, well, I mean, from my perspective, I mean, I actually had it on one of our goals to present at our next meeting was to come up with a plan for Old Town Hall. So this is fantastic.
We're ahead of the curve.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be great to be able to put forward some kind of educational package to help everybody understand who might not have been in town this whole time or maybe just doesn't understand kind of what the rules and regulations surrounding products such as this are, to bring them up to speed, identify the position that we're in, highlight some of the ideas that we have for moving forward. And then at that point, highlight the fact that the first step in being able to move forward with that kind of plan is to be able to go through the town meeting vote. Is it going to completely appease those who want to know specifically what's going in there before they'll vote for it? No, but at least, I mean, I think it's everything that we can do to help get everybody to that point. So I'd be all in favor of that effort and putting forward some resources to that.
And I would add to just touch on the same point. I think there are a couple, you're going to go over the warrant. There's a couple, we put out an RFP and then we have potential. Well, so the solar, right, is one that's going before town meeting in the fall for, on the water tank over on, behind the police station. So it might be something where you structure in a way that people might be more comfortable. I think, you know, I might be out of line here in terms of just sequence, but if you put it out, you're going to put out an RFP and then you're going to come back to town meeting with a project. So maybe that might help. I'm trying to recall, it seemed like you might be able to structure something to give some comfort for everybody in terms of putting it out there and then come back with something. You know, I don't know, we're just thinking.
Well, I think you'd have to, whoever wants to bid on it would have to provide assurances that it's going to meet the zoning that's allowed in the B1 outer core. And those are limitations for X or Y. I mean, I think we could, we could do a committee report to select the town meeting and say, hey, we're thinking about doing this. Would Jay allow a straw poll of, you know, if it had met these parameters, what do people think about us putting this out to bid and bringing it back to you in the spring? We could tee that up and then they knew, they were told that it was coming. We don't have to have the specifics. We could just say, we've looked at this and that's our thought, you know, yea or nay. Shall we spend some time working on it or should we not?
And I will say for the record, just like Bob, no one's had to approach me in terms of, it's just, like I said, it's an opportunity hopefully to make something positive out of the property.
And I'll just throw one last thing out there. To Bob's point about the fact that the town already does have such limited commercial area available, we have a number of small business owners in town who are dying to expand. And I think this would also be a great opportunity for anybody in that sector to maybe want to partner up and look for something that we can propose to the town together.
And then what I see on here as next steps was analyzing the wetland resources and the hazard. Is that the responsibility of the town or the person making the potential purchase of the property?
Well, I would say that the town should probably, you know, pose this to the Conservation Commission and see exactly what their thoughts are on it and try to nail it down to it. And I don't know if that's going to take an engineer having to do that and propose something for us to bring it to that point. It just seems like it's a little bit more of a solid answer when we get, when we go through it like a regular applicant. So that may be something to do. The other thing is, you know, as far as putting a package together is just taking the zoning that's out in the outer core and saying, these are the uses that are allowed. So as long as they fit within those parameters, that's what can go in there.
But you can't promise people that it's going to be the doctor's office or the dentist office. It could be either as long as it's allowed.
Or the daycare.
Or, thank you. There is a tremendous need for childcare.
Or the craft bourbon distillery. Just saying.
There is shared parking in town, isn't there?
Well, I just hope that people might catch this meeting and listen to this or read what's in the packet online, get more information.
Awesome. We would actually entertain any questions from people who are here. If people had questions, we're not going to engage in a dialogue, but because this is an information session and we are trying to generate the interest of the community, I'd be happy to open it up if anybody wanted their three minutes. Yes, sir. Actually, can you come to a microphone? And just to be clear before you start.
Bernie Alex, 40 North Street. That property behind the town hall, at one time, the area between the back of the hall, approximately just behind where the shed used to be, that was turned over to the state conservation. And the only way, while they were trying to do it, whether or not they took it over or not, if they did take it over, it needs an act of the legislature in order to undo it.
Thank you.
And the property is going to be worth a lot more if the sewerage runs by it.
I thought that might come up.
So to Mr. Point, there was a 1992 vote to do a swap, but that actually the swap wasn't followed through. So there was a plan that was voted on by town meeting, but it wasn't finalized, which was essentially, but actually, it's to the rear of the, yeah. Actually, the one in your packet, you probably have it in the packet. So we're talking about at least what.
Is it this one?
Yes, yes. So parcel B and parcel A, which was voted on by town meeting in '92, there's a plan here in your packet, but it wasn't finally executed. So it's, so that'd be a question whether you maybe need to dissolve that vote or not. But I don't, we're not really talking about that area, at least from what that exhibit is, but.
You know, if you think that the concept that they came up with in, you know, 2013 or so is the one we want to go with, we could do, the beauty of that one is it allows us to keep what's in the back, allows a forced main to go by, allows us to keep the building in the back, which, you know, does have real value.
Just to add to that, you'll notice in the back of the green section, the lot line, that's the end of the actual pavement in the, on the property. And then the line going along the left-hand side is basically the bottom of the hill. You know, it still doesn't go into the pavement. So everything that's paved is really still staying, maintaining the town. In the lot, we made it exactly to the minimum, which was 3,000 square feet. You know, we weren't taking, we were trying to minimize taking any extra length enough to make a lot that we could, you know, put a septic system on for that build with some parking for that building and not impact the town property at all. So the garage in the back isn't, doesn't, wasn't touched at all either, so.
Thank you. Anything else?
Oh, no, not from my end. Thank you guys so much. Thank you, Blithe.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Have a good night.
Yeah, it'd be helpful. I appreciate it.
And that brings us to number five. Please discuss the City Mills Bridge and Dam.
Actually, I know that Rep. Dooley was trying to get here to join us, and I don't see him in the room yet, so.
Should we go out of order?
Unfortunately for Blair, he might need to wait a little bit longer. That would allow Rich to be here to talk about the warrant articles if you're okay with changing the order.
Is that fine with me? Is that fine with you?
Absolutely.
He's still sitting in a Zoom room. So in your packet is a copy of just a list of warrant articles. And so what I want to do with some help from Rich is just give you a very quick soundbite on each of these because per our schedule at your next meeting on the 21st, we'll actually give you the draft warrant. So to run down them with, in order, article number one is always we have on here for any unpaid bills from a prior year. I don't believe there will be any. I'm not aware of any so far. And I would expect we'll just pass over that at town meeting when we get there. I'm sure we will have some budget transfers. We're still in the process of closing the books and making sure. We're not sure what our free cash is yet or exactly what we're going to need, but I expect we will have some small transfers. For instance, as you know, we're getting a federal grant for a new fire hose. We need about a $1,200 match to the federal grant. That's the kind of thing we'd handle in a transfer, those sorts of things. So we'll have a list of those for you as time goes on this fall. Items three and four are two typical capital articles, one from borrowing, one from other sources. We're rolling through all of our capital requests and meetings this week, and we will be developing a list of things. And I expect we will do some from borrowing and some from other sources. And we do have some grants that we're getting from some sources. And I think we will have a better free cash situation than we've had in the last couple of years because, as you know, our year ended well. But not ready to tell, you know, exactly what those are going to be yet. Number five, reports from town committees. I'm not aware of any yet, but that's always something we have. Number six, I think it's a year where we can consider putting money into our rainy day fund, given where we're going to end up. I think it's something for you guys to think about is whether we do it as a budget transfer and put it there? Or is this something that we want to call more attention to and have it be its own article? I've done it as separate right now, but I think it's, I'm going to look to the three of you to say, is this important enough to have it on its own? Or is the business of the town be better done if it's part of transfers? Looking about that for later. CPC article is number seven. Like they've done with other bodies of water, they've been approached to do a weed control project for chestnut weeds on Mirror Lake. To mirror, sorry for the pun, to do on the Norfolk side, what Rentham has already done on their side. And so to start to take care of that. That's number seven. Number eight, I think we've talked to you guys briefly about the fact that we need more cemetery spots. And so we, Blair and his team are working on a plan to spend about $35,000 if memory serves me, to basically, to build out the area going away from town hall, the back furthest side of the cemetery, closest to St. Norfolk Auto, that sort of side, to build, to be able to put in about, I want to say 150 to 200 plots and using cemetery perpetual care funds. The reason it's on the warrant is town council, previous town council has opined that we need town meeting approval to spend those monies. I'm going to turn number nine over to Mr., to Rich, which is street acceptances. Fredrickson.
Yeah, so we have two potential street acceptance in Fredrickson Road Extension and Oakview Trail. They're both part of Alexander State's South Division. The developers petitioned the select board to have those accepted as, and they're just the extensions to the cul-de-sacs. I'm waiting for the as-built plan, acceptance plans and deeds. Hopefully, we'll have all those before your next meeting, which is the 21st. And if we do, which I've been told I will, then you would refer to the planning board for a recommendation for acceptance. The planning board has a meeting on October 12th. They could make a recommendation back to the select board. You would have a holdup, a meeting on October 19th, which knows to be provided to the abutters. And then you can ultimately, hopefully, everything's in order, make a recommendation to have it laid out, those two, for acceptance.
Yep. Get those done. The next two are two different ground leases of town property. The first one is proposed, we were approached by a company called NextGrid who's doing two separate, but together, solar projects along Pond Street. And they'd like to expand and be able to maximize the site. And so they approached us about a year ago wanting to lease the land around our water tank up there to expand the array. So we put out an RFP. They submitted a response. We're negotiating those terms with them to not only lease that land, but also to build us an access road for public safety only to be able to go from there out to Pond Street so that police, when they're trying to come to this area of town, can likely get there more quickly than going out to 1A and out to the light and left again. So they built it at their expense. They're offering us, I think, a fairly reasonable deal. It's about, it's a one and a half cent savings on every kilowatt of power the town uses, which they suggest is worth about $100,000 a year, paying us a pilot or a payment in lieu of taxes payment for the value of the equipment that's on the site. And then the lease payment was in about the mid $40,000, $40,000 a year range that would go up every year over 25 years. The money for the land lease would accrue just to the water enterprise, so we would benefit that. And the other monies would benefit all of the town budgets and overall budget. And so we're working on finalizing that deal. And because it's an interest in land, town meeting has to approve it. The other one was an idea that came forward when the police station was being built to put solar panels on the roof of the building and as well possibly canopies on the parking area with solar. on the parking area with solar. A company approached Matt Hafner, the facilities director. And there's state programs that make that feasible. Seems to think, so this would require a town meeting vote, because again, it's an interest in land. It would also require the planning board to consider this again. And I guess when it came forward during the planning time, there was not an interest in doing such a project. Thinking that perhaps the thought process on that has changed a little bit, and this might be a time to think about it again. So Rich and I are working on, working with the planning board to make sure that if we're going to go forward with this, that they'd be open to the approval process that they would need to have.
Yes. I don't know, Kevin, were you still on, were you on the planning board back? I can't recall or not. But this was even before the police station had opened up, so it was earlier on. Since that time, there's been a significant amount of canopy solar projects that have gone, you know, across the state, the country, and so forth. So they're a lot more commonplace today as a means for providing solar and provide a secondary benefit, or maybe primary, if you're the police, to have covered space for the vehicles. So it's, I think, I think it will, like Blair said, does require modification to the approval. But the, I think, I think we've learned a lot since then. I think it could be a nice fit and serve a couple of nice valuable uses to the police department of the town. And then the, just a comment in terms of the other, the land lease for the water tank. We do have, the company, NextGrid, did get permitted two ground lease, ground mounted solar projects. One is up on the hill, Meeting House, the condominiums. They have one that's, it's not quite complete yet. But then I think the more important one in some respects is that they did a ground-mounted project at 15 Lincoln Road, for some people, Callaway Site, which was the former junkyard. So they've, they've cleaned that property up, which was a longstanding concern of the town. So we have a little bit of a track record in terms of their permitting projects. And so far, I would say that they've done a pretty good job in what they've promised to do.
The estimate on the station is that if you put all air proposing, it would generate 177% of the electricity that the police station uses. Costs us about $50,000 or so a year. So it would generate more than we need there to use other places. And like the, the water tank project, there'd be a lease payment to the town. There'd be, you know, monies for the value of the equipment that's there and electricity generated, as well as I think the one and a half cent per kilowatt hour. So we're starting to really, really starts to add up to some significant dollars if the town thinks it's the right thing to do.
And I think you're right, Rich. I was on the planning board during those discussions. And I don't believe that it was a cost benefit issue. I think it was an aesthetics issue when it came down to it towards the end of the discussion. I'll have to look back in my notes to remember for sure. But that, it's a different world now, so.
Yeah, it is certainly a different world.
The company that's proposing the police station would also like to do one at Freeman Kennedy, a much bigger one. So this might be a chance to see how we feel about it in a location that's not as, as well visited perhaps, and not, you know, on people's glide path necessarily, before we jump into one that's much, you know, would catch more people's eye. So those are those two. And then I'm going to turn it back over to Rich for the others.
Sure. So there's three items. I think it should be only three more, four?
Oh, three. I've got, I'll take the last one. You've got floodplain, stormwater, and temporary, and the signs.
Signs, sure. So the first one is the floodplain. Should be relatively straightforward. The, so FEMA across the country has been pushing out to local communities in terms of updating their floodplain bylaws. As you, we all know, there's been climate change and storms and so forth. So they've pushed out, the federal government down through the Department of Conservation Recreation, who administers the floodplain or the flood program at the state, a model bylaw. So what we have done is taken the state model bylaw and compared it to our floodplain bylaw. And there's, really, there's two, two versions of it that I have right now. The digesting, one would be a, a complete removal and replace exactly as the model bylaw. The other one is more an adaptation, where we take what we already have and make some adjustments to it to make sure we hit all the points that are needed within that model bylaw. Because it could, if not adopted by the town, jeopardize future FEMA funding or reimbursement. So we want to make sure we get that done. We do need to get that done this year, by the end of the year. So I'm just, I've talked to the planning board about it already.
Recording in progress. Recording stopped.
So the planning board has another meeting on the 14th. We're going to talk about a little bit more than two different versions, but, but that just gives you an overview of it. The other zoning matter is amending the sign bylaw, where it would give the town the ability to put in a sign board. And I'll call it messaging, but it's to, for, just for the town of Norfolk. So it's a unique opportunity in terms of to move towards more of the modern age of communication in terms of display. So you'd probably see some towns have already had message boards that, you know, "town meeting," or, you know, "get your COVID shot," or so forth. To be able to change the sign bylaw to allow that to happen on town property. The, and we're actually, if this, the vision is even a grander vision in terms of, I don't know if we'll shoot this high, but it would be nice, whereby it would be an LCD, basically a TV screen, but it'd be wrapped with, you know, decoratively, so for, for displaying. It wouldn't be, it'd be tastefully done, but you'd be able to change the, you know, you might be able to say there's a...
Parade coming.
You know, parade coming, or, you know, "we need plow drivers." And be able to digitally, you know, from control, it'd be, it'd be controlled by the town, the messaging, so it wouldn't be outside the town. But to allow, at least change the zoning to be able to do that. It was something that I know Mr. Bullock, it's been on his list of to-do things. Do you have the little kiosk down here at the bottom of the hill? That was kind of the earlier version, to be able to display messaging for things that are happening. That's, they work, but they're a little bit outdated in terms of usefulness and to be able to... So the thought is if this were to pass, that it would allow the town to be able to do it and, and do messaging. So that's a zoning bylaw change that'll be going before town meeting. So it's really just two, two zoning matters. And then the last matter is, I'm working in conjunction with the TPW department, changes to the stormwater general bylaw as part of the MS4 permit, municipal stormwater four, I forget the four is, but in any event, we need to make changes to that bylaw. So that's being proposed to be put on the, the fall town warrant. That's kind of the high overview of those.
And then the last one is, you may recall, two years ago in the fall, we passed some money to do a recodification of all the town's general and zoning bylaws. Anthony Turry was working on that till he left. And the, the general bylaws are probably the more straightforward one to go ahead with. And those are probably ready to be done. So what we thought was if town council feels that we're ready, and we all do, that we would go ahead with the general bylaw in, in the fall here. And we would wait to do the more complicated version of zoning bylaws in the spring or so and just try to get those both done. It would time in very well with getting the website updated, being able to be able to put up a codified set that's all better organized, updated, searchable for the public, or trying to find things in the future, kind of our, our plan going forward. So have no citizen petitions at this point. And, and heard from no other boards, other than what you see here, wanting to be on the warrant. That's the quick list.
Have we reached out to the town committee to see if anybody is willing or able to do a committee report?
I haven't yet, but we will. At this point, I haven't talked with the moderator, but I'm assuming we're going to be at the middle school as we planned. I would expect we'll have some protocols in place with masks or you're trying to maybe not sit shoulder to shoulder. But, you know, hopefully our numbers will stay low and people feel comfortable doing that. It's not a warrant that necessarily is going to bring out lots of people on a controversial issue. That's the update. And just one, I made a mistake on number 14. I should have said zoning bylaw change on the signs, not general. So I will correct that.
I don't know if I'm ready to say goodbye to the huge orange traffic signs every time we want to get a message out to the community, but I guess we can hear about some other options.
Excellent. Any other questions? So that brings us back to number five. Please discuss City Mills Bridge and Dam.
So we timed that beautifully. Yes, it is perfect.
All right.
So joining me at the meeting tonight is Blair Crane by Zoom and Rep. Representative Dooley in person. So in your packet, like the old town hall, is kind of an overview of what is going on with this project, a little bit of the history. But just to put it in some words, the town received a, a report from the Office of Dam Safety in 2014, saying the City Mills Dam was in poor shape and needed to be addressed. And so with the help of Rep. Dooley, the town received $200,000 in two, in total, in two separate earmarks, to do some repair work and also to do some design work. So we spent about $90,000 of that money in various testing. And right after I arrived, there was a project to remove some trees along the edges of the dam to shore up what was impeding it. And not much work has happened since then. As you know, there's, there's, bills going through the legislature, the Congress in Washington about a major infrastructure bill. And so we, we talked about the fact, well, maybe, you know, we should really rethink where we're at and go in a different direction with this project. Our plan had been to take the rest of the money and put out to bid some concrete repairs to the dam, which are important, but according to the engineer, are not critical to do right now. And so Blair and I met with, with Sean and with our engineer two or three weeks ago and talked about, you know, should we continue on that plan? Or should we rethink this and use those monies to put in place a design to a point by which we would be more shovel-ready for potentially, not definitely, but potentially, a federal earmark grant to address the whole structure? And we debated, do we just make more repairs? Do we replace the whole darn thing? And it's complicated, because as I learned, you not only have a dam, but you have a bridge and you have two culverts. And you can't just move one without touching the other. And there's some real negative impact if you try to just fix part of it, but not of it. As which you've got a building, a business that depends on being right next to it, practically up of it, right?
Correct. For the water, for the fire suppression.
Exactly. So that's, that's, I'll tee it with that and say, I think we ought to hear from, my suggestion, hear from Sean and from Blair about their perspective of this. Because our goal was to go over this with you, see if you agree with, ought to change course and tee ourselves up to go after funds or not. That's really the, the thing that we want to talk about tonight. So I'll leave it there. Sean, do you want to start?
As I was saying, I'd like to apologize for my attire, I did from coaching football. So that's the reason I came in a little, running a little, came around the corner on two wheels, and so I'm here. I was gonna say, all of a sudden, my, my phone starts blowing up. Kevin's like, "where are you?" And I'm like, "oh, man, I said 5:45." Yeah, so basically what we did was, when this original inspection took place, the bridge was given, you know, all sorts of, and bridge slash dam was given all sorts of defects on a lot of different levels. And so went after two different funding mechanisms, and we were able to achieve both of them. Then we actually almost had a third one for, for an additional million dollars. And then we found out that it wasn't technically, through the small bridge program, but it wasn't technically classified as a bridge, because it's also a dam. So we had to kind of scrap that. But the thought process was that we wanted, we, we knew at some point in time we're going to have to replace it. It's, it's, you know, it's over 110 years old, I think. It's not something that you, we can, we can keep putting Band-Aids on it, but sooner or later, even those things are going to fail, especially with the, you know, and we have to worry about the environmental impacts of, of that dam failing, because it's been alongside of, and feeding into the water stream along, you know, an industrial building that has been there for, you know, 150 years. So God knows what was in the water and in the sediment, heavy sediment from 150 years ago, from the different businesses that have been there. And that feeds into the Charles River watershed. So it's a, it's a very environmentally sensitive area, as well as protecting the dam. And, you know, you know, like, you know, was said earlier, we've, we've, you know, it's not just one thing. It's, it's two culverts. It's a dam. It's the, you know, maintaining the water for, you know, for, for Camgeor. It's the, it's the bridge. And so what, you know, in a, in a perfect world, you know, if money was no object, you would fix it, put in a new bridge, and also probably take out a little bit of that curse of that, that curve, which has been very, you know, very dangerous and had quite a few fatalities over the years anyways. But when we met with the engineers, you know, they said, we kind of went through the process. And Blair, correct me if I'm wrong, we got to the point where even doing the patchwork repairs, there's a decent chance, just doing the patchwork repair, it would end up costing as much as putting in a new bridge and dam system. And hopefully, in, in, you know, again, perfect world scenario, we could build the bridge and dam in tandem to the existing bridge and dam, if we're replacing it, as opposed to if we're just repairing it, we're going to have to close down that portion of Main Street for a significant period of time, you know, which, you know, probably be more detrimental for the people that, you know, that go to our train station. It would shut off that end of the, of the town. Whereas if we could do it in tandem, it would be far better and hopefully come in, you know, roughly around, around the same price. And so what we're, what we are anticipating is an additional $8 billion in federal funds for, for projects such as this. So I had originally had this earmarked for, I think, $3 million. And so I've increased the earmark to $8 million. So that's in our legislative, and we don't, we're not really sure how it's all going to transfer down. But I've also been in conversation with Congressman Auction Claus about, about it as well. And he's willing to, you know, champion us as well. If it, if it ends up being 100% federal or 100% state or a combination of the two, we're kind of trying, going to try to hit it at both angles. I spoke to the governor about it. He's like, you know, whatever you need, we'll, you know, do whatever we can. We have to get the money first, but, you know, right now it's all theoretical. But one thing we do know is that, and this was the, you know, when we repaved 115, the reality is we can't have pie in the sky. You know, "oh, we need, you know, $8 million for a dam bridge repair." And they're like, "oh, okay, let me, show me where you got that number." And we're like, "oh, we're just kind of thinking that's where, where it's going to be." We have to have some plans. We have to have some concrete engineering in place. And at least, you know, we don't have to be at a 90% phase, you know, but, you know, even a 25, 30% level. And I think that's what the engineering firm said we could get to with the remaining money that we've already put aside. And for what it's worth, you know, the intent of the money was for, predominantly for design to repair the bridge. So it's not like it was predominantly for repairs and we're using it for design. It really was, you know, when I put in the legislation, it was for design for a new bridge. And we could use some of the money for repairs to help us limp along until we got to the point, so. So I don't know if Blair wants that.
Blair?
It's, it's very weird being in this space where you don't, you can't see the TV or anything. anything.
No, I think, I think Sean, Sean said it well. I think, you know, where we're at and with the money that is left from the, from the money that Representative Dooley was able to get us, I think that we can certainly achieve the goal that we have in front of us if, if that's the reason and if that's the desire that we have to move forward.
And, and just to point out, one of the other things that I think the engineering, you know, team pointed out was no matter what, this engineering is going to be needed at some point. Even, even if we end up going the limp along Band-Aid over the next 10 year phase, all of this engineering can be used for that aspect as well. So even if we don't get the money, it's not like this $100,000 is going away. So we're going to have to spend it at one point or another anyway.
Yeah, for example.
And no matter what, no matter what we do here, it's a 100-year-old bridge and it's certainly not getting any younger. So at some point, we're definitely going to have to theoretically cross the bridge.
And I mean, infrastructure, you know, funding like this just was the last time it came along. We don't want to miss the opportunity, we think, to possibly get as much as, I mean, we hope it doesn't cost that much, but that's what we need to find out. The question I had for the engineer was, okay, but what about those repairs? I mean, I don't want to be on any of our watch that this thing fails and we weren't as prepared as being. Don't feel that that's imminent and this is, I would support this direction. So we wanted to bring it to you to make sure you didn't disagree. And so we can immediately make the, you know, Blair can make the phone call tomorrow morning and say, get to work. Cause we don't want to be, we want to be ready when they call and say, show us your plans. We want to be able to turn around and shoot those down to them.
Yeah, cause that was the reason we ended up getting 115 paved, even though, you know, there was probably 30 other things on the town's priority list of, you know, projects that we would have liked to have that money for. But that one was checked off as shovel ready and had the engineering. So, so MassDOT partnered with the town and that's where we got 115 expanded in the, you know, the sidewalks to, you know, all the way down to Pond, you know, Street Playground.
Awesome.
Far be it for me to disagree with town administrator, TPW director, state representative and engineer who's all spoken in favor of the project. But I do think it's important to say thank you very much for securing the funding for this and continuing to work towards securing more funding. Really appreciate it.
I'm trying.
Absolutely. I think it sounded real.
Okay. Well, we just wanted to make sure.
Awesome.
Big toe test.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Blair.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that brings us to town administrator updates.
I just one quick one. If you haven't been down Holbrook Street Extension, the building for the Wellfield is in. We need still some work to do, but we seem to be on track to be, have that done and, and hopefully have DEP approval to start operating it in early October. But it is coming along. So if you're down that way and you know, swing in, you can, it's not terribly exciting to look at, but it's exciting that it's there. You know, I'm very grateful we've had, you know, the rain that we've had this summer. It hasn't been the drought we had last summer, which was really concerning about enough water. But I didn't include that in my weekly update, so I want to make sure I told you about that. That's it.
Awesome. Thank you. And then we have some warrants.
Hmm.
It's in the next section.
There's nothing on the teleprompter. How do I not have that?
This is in, go in section, in section one.
All right, I moved that the board approved five warrants for the period of July 30th to August 31st, 2021 is printed on the agenda for this meeting.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
There are no minutes for approval, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Uh, so moved.
All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you.